Okay. I want to welcome everyone here. It is five thirty-four P M on Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Tannal Line Economic Development Commission. We have in attendance Commissioners John Stratton, Josh Smith, Wendy Russell, Jess Hartman, Ron Colwell, Joe Pean, Jean Wilcinsky, and myself Cheryl Porter. The C. And they checked from N J she's unable to attend. Yes, Randy Ashby, Director of Operations for Land and Sea Distribution, the parent company of Kellogg Marine. Randy is here virtually via Zoom. We can see him and he can see us on a laptop on the table. And we also have here in person Michael Leach, property owner of the properties we're discussing specifically this evening, one and five Enterprise Drive. I should probably amend that because the application involves a few additional properties than just those two addresses. I want to welcome both of our guests and we have Jen Diamano, our clerk here, helping us out as well. Thank you, Jen. The first order of business is to hear from Randy and then Michael about the proposed Kellogg expansion. In speaking to both of them, I shared that we, as Economic Development, are most interested in the business aspects of this expansion. And we hope we can support you as one of our larger employers in town as you think about this expansion and go before zoning with your application. That application is Michael Leach's application as property owner. I believe Matchnik is also involved, but you can correct me. That's Well, do you want to correct me on that right now?
I mean, I don't believe Mac is involved.
Okay.
So we bought property from from them quite some time ago. So I think that's what you're
Okay.
But I can, I can start if that makes the most sense, right?
Sure. And just, I want to be sure we have Randy sharing with us the business aspects. Yeah, okay.
I'll just give you the broad brushstrokes and then Randy can sort of fill in the
Great. And you please join us at the table.
So yeah, I appreciate that. So Mike Leach, Rico, and we represent the the two properties in discussion. Sort of jumping back, we noticed a environmental concern that jumped down on us with a drainage pipe coming from Hatchet Hill Road across what you were referring to, Matlin property, right? But shortly after we acquired it and it was discharging into our property, which is what we'll call the Sennheiser property. Just because that's what everybody's most familiar. And so the water was dumping in there and creating a wetland circum sort of situation, but it wasn't a very healthy wetlands. And the water was being discharged without being treated. So we knew would be very expensive to try to fix it. And so what we did is we engaged with the town and to look for solutions. And and we engaged with Land and Sea Kellogg to see if they had any space needs that they might have that we could potentially utilize to enhance or to to expand the Sennheiser building in order to solve that environmental problem. So that was our priority number one. We're very fortunate that Land and Sea and did have some pending needs that they had at the time. So we're really using, piggybacking that on as a solution to solve this greater problem.
Okay.
Now, for ready to speak to what, how he would sort of fill in that box is a little bit more on his side of it, but because of their ability to come in and to fill that box, it's going to allow us to relocate that pipe, bring it down and across Enterprise Drive and recreate a much more pristine wetland situation that will naturally discharge into the Three Mile River. And if anybody wants any information on the Three Mile River, I am an extra.
Okay.
On the Three Mile River.
Did your father not build that?
Yeah, the Three Mile. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, 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 right. I grew up in that river, so.
Okay. Why don't we have Randy fill us in and then we're going to circle back to you because I know we have additional questions for you. Randy?
Yeah, a little bit of background. Obviously Kellogg Marine has been part of O-line for a long time. You know, definitely a, an institution within the community. One of the things that, that within Kellogg Marine, though, is it has always focused on marine product. Now, Land and Sea also is an R V district. And the one thing about R V product is it's big, it's bulky. And we haven't had a lot of space with our current facility to be able to put that in there. So part of what we've been talking about with Mike is getting additional space that will allow us to expand our offerings from Kellogg Marine and to also provide R V distribution to customers across the northeast. By looking at this facility that is right next door to where where we are with with the current Kellogg Marine facility in the Sennheiser building. This allows us the opportunity to expand those offerings and in the future, you know, as we're looking at it, obviously add headcount to be able to handle that product. And then also increase the flow of product that goes in and out of there and thus eventually contributing to the community with with jobs and with other revenue that we have there. So you know, obviously, one of the things we looked at is with a facility the size that we're looking to expand, I believe it's fifty thousand square feet is what we're talking about in the Sennheiser building. We would need support in there to be able to operate out of those buildings simultaneously. Based off of market conditions, we could have an additional up to forty, fifty people. Obviously, that's over the next couple of years. And again, based off of market conditions and things like that. So business case wise, that's one of the things that is very you know, that makes me interested in in working on this with Mike and Rico to get this building to a condition that we would be able to move into it. We do historically, we have had other off-site buildings for bulkier product that we've used. But those have been in Norwich, those have been in Old Saybrook, and obviously those take thirty, forty minutes for us to be able to get there, even travel time, not counting anything to handle that product. That would bring this in closer and also allow us to run operations simultaneously out of those buildings. So that, you know, instead of piecemeal like we have. So that's kind of the broad brushstrokes on that. I don't know if anybody has any questions to me. Follow up.
That's a great overview, Randy. I want to do, have one clarification. When you talk about R V product, you're talking about parts, correct?
Correct. Yes, this is all part, we are a parts and accessory. So we're talking everything. You know, the things that we handle is everything from a gasket that can go on an engine all the way up to an awning or air conditioning unit or refrigerator or something like that. So you know, the R V products can get pretty large in size. And when I say big and bulky, that's, that's the kind of things I'm talking.
Okay, great. But not R Vs themselves.
No, 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 not R Vs. So not looking to do that. This is parts, this is, you know, tires, gaskets, awnings, bridges, things, things of that.
Good. And then also you mentioned dependent on market conditions over the next forty-five years, it could be forty to fifty additional staff. And again, you know, contingent on the market, but the number you gave me the other day of your current number of employees, can you reiterate that?
When I, when I factor in drivers, it's approximately a hundred and seventy-two-ish.
Okay.
We unfortunately had had some employees that have left us recently, but that's, that was what we're looking to back. So
Okay.
Based off of everything, I believe the numbers are right around one seventy, one seventy-two.
Very. Other questions?
Yes.
It's very straightforward in terms of the business. You are one of our largest employers in our little town. The big Y by comparison, our supermarket employs one hundred people. We do appreciate your presence in Old Line. And perhaps now we'll circle back to Mike and fill in kind of the technical aspects.
Sure.
So we're talking about filling in part of the Sennheiser building.
Correct.
And you shared, I asked you the other day, does that mean Sennheiser is shrinking? Can you speak to that?
Sennheiser has sixty employees.
Six zero. Yeah, sixty. Yeah. So they're not currently in the whole building. Is that what you were telling me the other day?
Oh, currently in the whole building.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're going to remain in a section of that building.
They have sixty employees.
Okay. Okay. All right. And the building, the new build is, can you just give us an idea of where that is happening?
Yes, it's going to happen to the south end of the building, so directly in between the Land and Sea Building and the and the end of the Sennheiser Building. So, you know, fortuitously, when we built the Sennheiser Building, we did an expansion on it and then we put a kickout wall at the end. So we're able to just kind of tap it into that kickout wall and away it goes. So it'll open wide opened into the expansion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And will it connect the two buildings or is there?
Yeah, no, no, no.
So it's an expansion of the Sennheiser Building?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah.
And is it an expansion as well of the current Kellogg building?
It is not an expansion of the current building. We are going to mitigate the wetlands in there and clean that whole area up, put in a new pipe and drainage system. And then, you know.
Okay. All right, great. Other questions for Michael?
The village expansion.
The expansion's about, it's forty thousand square feet, but they'll be, the ideas will be taking over approximately another, just under twenty thousand square feet of of existing warehouse. It's going to be a unbelievable thing for Old Line.
How so? There's the space in the
Just like, it's just such a great use. It's such, it's such a great use in, in, in Old Lime and the industrial park. I mean, every municipality from, from Old Saybrook to Stonington would love to have this type of use, low impact. You know, great taxpayer, corporate, corporate value system, you know, this, we just put solar panels on the roof, you know, it's of the Land and Sea Building. You know, it's the type, you know, in our, in our portfolio, it's something that we point to all the time and say, you know, we're proud of this. It's in our backyard. This is our, this is our home too.
Okay. And can you just clarify? You went before zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes.
But you haven't, have you gone before zoning?
No, we're going, we're into zoning November twelfth. So I don't know if this is the right form for this, but there's some certain things in the zoning regulations that were new to me since the last time I had to be in here, which are the height requirements. So, you know, now, I mean, forty-five feet is, is a hard, high, height requirement in the town. However, every twelve feet counts as one floor. So when we did this, why we had to get a variance for this building first was the forty thousand square foot building, they were counting it as four stories of twelve thousand square feet or forty thousand square feet, sorry. So that was a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So we needed fifteen acres to get the coverage to be able to put the project in.
Okay.
And they were imaginary floors.
Right.
Right?
Right.
At that, in an industrial park.
Right.
Right? So that would be, if I was an Economic Development Commission, that would be something that would, and you had a limited amount of economic development opportunities and space, that would definitely be on the forefront of something to work on.
And that is something that we can bring to zoning as they update their regulations.
And they were aware of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, like, you know, pausing, pressing the panic button here. They were fully aware of that. That was an oops.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else you would want us to know about regarding traffic or?
Well, yeah, I think, you know, traffic is an important, you know, part of any project like this. You know, again, we're blessed in that how the location of this site and, you know, its proximity to Interstate ninety-five and the four-way cloverleaf and all that. You know, there was some discussion early on where some folks had come out and discussed or you know, asked us about trucks, you know, going through, you know, sort of up and around the other way through. I know it was
Residential.
Yeah, it just wasn't, wasn't even feasible. So just to be aware of that, you know, so. You know, in all of our conversations, the town has been fantastic to work with. I applaud the planning department. And the Eric's team was, has been very communicative with us about, you know, things to be looking on the lookout for. So, you know, we don't anticipate a lot, you know, if any opposition at all, so.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. But we really appreciate you, you know, you making this forum available, available to us. It really is, it's nice to be able to comment and to talk about it really like this.
Well, and we would welcome you back in the future to talk about the whole industrial.
So if there was like another project that was coming in right behind this one, you'd want us to do the same thing?
Yes, but also to talk to us about vacancy rates and things like that and what the challenges are for that whole
Yeah, the whole area. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
Randy, is there anything else you'd like to add? Does anyone have additional questions for Randy?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to add. I'll be up on the, next week to go to the zoning commission meeting as well. Just kind of reinforce what Mike just said about, you know, I've already talked with my team and made sure that that we're not going up the hill, we're going, you know, ma- making the right and going to the cloverleaf area, you know, getting on the interstate that way. So we're not disrupting any residential homes or anything, so.
Okay, great.
Randy, this is John Stratton. I see the Kellogg vehicles far and away up in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, down south. And I just want to make a point that you are a, a eastern regional business, not a purely local one. And I might add, I suppose that Sennheiser is similar. Sennheiser is a national company. And, yeah, well, it's built locally, but it's, it's, this reach is national, right?
And Randy, you have locations across.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Kellogg is our, is definitely a regional brand, very trusted, long time in the industry. But Land and Sea is national. Matter of fact, really international. We have thirteen buildings in eleven states. And we, we go coast to coast. So we have, we have, you know, on the west coast, we're in Seattle and Fresno, California. We make deliveries all throughout the country. We also have three facilities in Canada. So we, you know, as part of, we fall under the Brunswick Corporation umbrella along with Mercury Marine and some other sister. So we, we are, we are definitely, so Kellogg's kind of our, our brand up in the northeast and that's why we've kept Kellogg is, is the name up there. But really, Land and Sea is, we are the largest marine distributor in the market and, and it's because of our reach that we're able to do that.
And Randy travels among all those locations.
Yeah.
And he was more than willing to come to Connecticut from Florida for this evening's meeting. And I'm glad that I asked you about that and offered you the Zoom alternative and that worked out for you. So, all right, anything else? Okay, thank you. We're gonna work on our letter of support. It gets a little tedious, so you are welcome to stay online, Randy. Otherwise, I'll sign you off. Michael, you're welcome to stay or go. Your choice.
Be great. Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Randy.
Take care. Bye.
You just pass that down to me and I'm going to use my laptop. Okay, great.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like the old days.
Yes, exactly. Before things were recorded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We say whatever we want.
Okay. All right. Thanks for coming out, Mike. I'm just pulling up the wording. Let's see, where am I sent? I sent out earlier today some draft wording for an E D C letter of support. I can walk us through each paragraph. And we can adapt as needed or based on what our new information is from our guests.
So I think the first paragraph, Michael, didn't he say that Matt, Matt owner applicant, Macnik C U L C? Is that correct? Is that still?
He said, that was not.
Yeah, which is, I took that right from the zoning application, so I'll just take that out. Let me just pull up my All right. Okay, so the first paragraph would be the Economic Development Commission supports the expansion of the warehouse facility as proposed in the special permit application. Oh, I see where you're saying. Yeah, so I'm going to just double check on that. I should probably ask first, is anyone not supportive of this expansion? All right. The second paragraph, by Enterprise Drive, currently occupied by Kellogg Marine, a company of Land and Sea. Kellogg currently warehouses and distributes marine parts out of its location. The proposed expansion would allow the company to, in the future, all house, also warehouse and distribute our, I'm going to make that recreational vehicle. Recreational vehicle. R V parts, which is a growing segment of Land and Sea's business. This is what Randy had told me the other day.
We want to, I don't want to get into too much of the weeds, but he said parts and accessories.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe we should throw in accessories.
And accessories. Thank you, Joe. Okay, and it's twenty twenty-four strategic planning process. The E D C has looked at the importance of the light industrial distribution district on Hatchet Hill Road and Vista Drive. I mean, this is a little flowery, but tucked away on the eastern end of town where these businesses enjoy the easy on and off of exit seventy-one, it can be easy to forget the importance of this district to the town's overall economic health. Concerns about that sentence?
Should we say that we asked the, the owner that he assured us that the additional truck travel would only travel on the nine, you know, on industrial drive to get to ninety-five and not go through Hatchet Hill Road. I think it's important that we ask that question. If he blatantly represented that he would not have, he would prohibit the drivers from going through the neighborhood.
Okay. You could say that, but then all kinds of things can happen. If ninety-five shut down?
Yeah, we asked the question.
Or people get lost. We, let's see. In discussion.
Did we ask the question or did he just offer that information? I don't think we asked a question.
In discussion with the Director of Operations for Land and Sea, it is his intention that any additional truck traffic will access I ninety-five at exit seventy-one and not through residential neighborhoods?
By industrial park road, roadways, something like that.
Okay. What you call industrial park roadways. Very good. Okay. I will put that sentence in here. I'm not sure it fits right there. Let's just see, maybe it does. Tucked away on the eastern end where these businesses enjoy the easy on and off of seventy-one, it can be easy to forget the importance of the district, of this district to the town's overall economic health. The E D C believes maintaining oh, what if I put that, that in before this section? All right, I'm going to find a spot for it.
After the word health, before the last sentence.
Okay. Okay, the E D C believes maintaining the stability of this business district, one with a number of limitations, including water and waste limitations, ledge and wetlands and lack of expandable land to develop is key to the economic stability of the town as a whole. Okay. The E D C assesses that there is minimal land available in the L I D district or private development and believes supporting our current property owners who are responsibly improving their existing property is key to a sustainable light industrial zone that provides ongoing property tax revenue to the town and jobs for local residents. Kellogg is one of our largest employers in town with a hundred and seventy-two current employees. For comparison, the big Y has about a hundred employees at any given time, having strong anchors such as Kellogg and Sennheiser. I think I'm just going to put Kellogg.
Consider adding what he said about the number of jobs you would add.
Yes, okay.
The expansion has potential for staffing increase of forty to fifty employees.
Expansion.
Has potential for a staffing increase of forty to fifty positions. Say jobs if that's more.
Fifty jobs. And he made it very clear, dependent on market conditions.
Over the next several years.
Oh, over.
It wasn't going to be immediate.
Next. And said if we could find people.
That's a whole, that's a whole different issue.
Market conditions. Okay. All right, Kellogg is one of our largest employers in town with a hundred and seventy-two current employees. The expansion has potential for staffing increase of forty to fifty jobs over the next several years, common dependent on market conditions. For comparison, the big Y has about a hundred employees at any given time. Having strong anchors such as Kellogg in the L I D district is key to ongoing stability for this important sector of our local economy.
I would change jobs to employees since we're talking about how many employees there are everywhere, not jobs.
Yes, yes, very good. Employees. Okay, great. We support the proposed responsible expansion on Enterprise Drive, allowing for warehouse expansion of, now, here's the thing, of approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet. He's saying forty. But the zone, zoning application says approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet.
He's, he's, he said, he said a little less than forty or something.
Okay.
Slightly under forty is what he said. So I think thirty-eight meets that.
So should I leave that thirty-eight thousand?
Or just leave?
Okay.
Put approximately.
Yeah. Thirty. Okay, approximately. Yeah.
We're within two thousand.
Yeah. Probably see. Yeah. Thereby giving Land and Sea Kellogg Marine the opportunity to grow its distribution capability, building tax revenue in a long-term small increase. Long-term, should I say small increase in job growth without leaving Old Line?
You take out small.
Yeah. In the long term. Yeah, it is really. Long-term increase in job growth without leaving Old Line. Okay. I can send this out tomorrow just to make sure I have no typos. The idea is I would read this at the public hearing for the zoning meeting next Tuesday. If I am unable to, I hope one of you can read it in my stead. Can we vote on this letter as it's pretty much written? Sure.
And the last sentence there, it's, is it thereby giving Land and Sea the opportunity to grow?
Let's see what I've got here.
Oh, it's given. Yeah, giving.
Let me just, okay, I have given. Okay, thereby giving. Very good.
Land and Sea, the opportunity to grow its distribution capability, building tax revenue in a long-term increase in job growth. Can't you just say in Old Line?
Sure.
Instead of without leaving over.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Are people comfortable voting with this letter? In theory, and I'll just send it out tomorrow for like a very, like surely you didn't change giving to given kind of thing? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the letter as edited?
As edited and substantially complete.
And substantially complete for
Presentation to.
Thank you, the public here, the zoning public hearing. Thank you.
So, so moves.
All right, we've got Joe making that.
I have a second.
I have a second.
We have Jean. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Only missing MJ, okay. Okay, so next up, we have approval of the October twenty twenty four meeting minutes. This is for two meetings. October, we've got October second and October sixteenth. What I want to hold until our next meeting is approval of reports sent in because I don't have those all compiled yet. So I would like to, I gave, I sent everyone MJ's real estate update, but I need to compile a little bit more of what we have. So I'll submit that for next meeting and then we can approve that. Also, you received, I forwarded to you a letter from Michaela Pearson and Frank Papalardo, representing Soundview Commission and the Shoreline Gateway Committee with their suggestions for additions to strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats for the shoreline area. Rather than tackle that tonight, I'd like to table that until the next meeting to see if we would accept those into our, the minutes. So tonight, we're just working on the two sets of minutes for October second and October sixteen. Is there?
Not incorporating until later.
Not incorporating that email from Michaela until our next meeting because I wanna make sure everyone's looked at it and we can have some time to discuss it. So is there a motion to accept the minutes of the October second EDC regular meeting?
Yes, I'm motion to accept, ten two.
We have Jeff, is there a second? We have John, any discussion of October second's regular meeting? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, are, are you, you're gonna, you're gonna be abstaining, okay, so any opposed?
Yeah, I'm also an abstainer.
Who is abstaining? We have Wendy and Joe. So.
I'm not sure if I was hearing.
I don't know, you weren't, you weren't.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Yeah, okay, so we have Scott, Wendy and Joe abstaining. You were at the last meeting.
Yes, I missed that.
Okay. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, so it passes, okay. So, now. Yeah, now, the October sixteenth meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the October sixteenth special meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the October sixteen special meeting minutes, as written.
As written, that's Jeff, do I have a second?
I'm second.
We've got Scott. Any discussion? This was a meeting that was upstairs. We had technical difficulties. That meeting is not on YouTube yet because the meeting recording ran until the next day after we left the building. So they are trying to cut it down to post. Okay. Any other discussion of that meeting? All in favor of approving the October sixteenth minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention, absences? Joe and Wendy, only Joe and Wendy, right? Okay, very good, so that passes as well. Okay, next up on the agenda is public comments. We have one member of the public online and we do not have any members of the public in person here. Now is the time, if you would like to make public comment, to unmute yourself and share with us your comment. All right, hearing none. We will move on to the next part of our agenda. Discussion of Halls Road Overlay District Zoning Change Proposal. We're discussing this this evening because the Halls Road Improvement Committee has asked us to consider submitting a letter of support to go along with their recommended application that they're presenting to the Board of Selectmen. As a reminder, the Board of Selectmen then decides if they are submitting the application on behalf of the town. And we are discussing the letter of support just for the zoning overlay regulations, I guess they're regulations, and design guidelines that I forwarded in an email.
So we're working off the letter in your two fifty five email?
There are two letters. John spent a lot of time writing a very passionate letter. I don't think passion is the right word, no, but it was, it was.
Sealed with a kiss.
Strong letter. I asked him to shorten it for the purposes of our, what we needed it for. You shortened it. So what you have now is, I have done just a basic, you know, we be undersigned support block of text. I've attached to that email John's shortened letter. And the question becomes, do we? Well, and I'm gonna get around to the fact that not everyone supports the overlay. Do we, we have two documents to work on drafting this letter. A very straightforward, kind of we be undersigned. And there was an attachment to it that started with, I think the word they. Okay. I know that I answer, I did my best to answer some questions that Mona had posed in the last meeting. I know Mona sent out to all of us right before the, I don't know how, how much before the meeting, but before the meeting, some line by line questions or concerns about you know, taken off of the zoning application itself or the updates. So thank you for those. And my point of view is some of us are going to support this and some of us just aren't going to support it. But what I want us all to make our decisions based off of is what's actually in front of us rather than having unanswered questions. So Mona, I know in your latest email, you do have some outstanding questions that are not going to be answered tonight. So I think what we're doing with this letter is having people either support the proposal or not support the, support the proposed changes. And what I would do is take our final letter and share it with MJ and she can decide if she supports or doesn't support. Does that process sound okay, John?
Process is fine, but I would say is that since what I started out to do before the shortening, which was fine, was to tell, give reasons why we were doing, why we supported. We supported for reasons having to do with the betterment of the town rather than betterment of business. And I mean, that's to summarize the variability. So that lacking an opportunity to, to say why and how we fit into a historical context of non-responsiveness in terms of planning to the necessity for some, I believe, this is my belief, for some kind of planning that, let's go with a short letter, get it in front of the selectman and then they can come and ask us questions if they need to. So I would go with your short letter for the purpose of moving it along. We don't wanna have six months go by and real estate offers tendered or things like that, which would further complicate the issue.
Okay. Other?
I'll just comment that I don't think we want to get into the, the degree of granularity that really belongs to planning and zoning, which is a lot of what I see with this and that we should be not endeavoring to take on responsibilities that are beyond our commission's scope.
And, and my letter did not get into that sort of detail, but rather to, yes, passionate, an emotional sense of the quality of life in the town.
Anything else?
I know I wasn't here, but I have, I have a question and I may have missed it. It's, it's all private property there.
Right.
And so what is their process of getting all those businesses or are they doing eminent domain, do you know?
No, not at all. This is a zoning change only. And it gets a little confusing because there's a master plan which has zoning changes available for property owners to take advantage of if they want. There's a plan to put in sidewalks.
Okay.
And there's a potential plan for a pedestrian bridge over Lieutenant River. This is just the zoning changes. It could be that Halls Road looks the same way it does today in thirty years from now. It's really up to the existing property owners if they wanna take advantage of these extended.
Options.
Capabilities. Yeah, capabilities, options for, well, I wanna have retail, I wanna have some multifamily house, you know, I wanna do some townhouses. But in order to do that, the town is saying, well, it would help if we get some, you know, retail or business space.
Actually says in this that if they want that, they can't build on to the existing structures that are pushed back. It says that they have to build it up close to the street.
Yeah, that's the enticement, so.
Right, so it's like kind of a carrot, but it's more like a noose around your neck. So like, let's say you were to buy Andy's Deli and you wanted to convert those offices upstairs into apartments. You would not be allowed to, you'd have to rebuild apartments forward facing on the front of Halls Road. And one thing that's very confusing, it says zero setback, which I didn't understand that.
But, but they can't build apartments today. You can't put apartments upstairs. You're not supposed to put apartments upstairs, I'll put it that way.
Right, and so if they wanted to build apartments, they would have to build new buildings on Halls Road.
Right.
So, but somebody, like is, let's say I was an investor and I, so, you know, it, I think that if it shouldn't have to be that you have to rebuild it on the street. That's one thing that I don't like because it's forcing people to move their stuff to the street. And I actually don't even understand how this is gonna work. There's talk in here about on-street parking. So are we going to do like what happened at Soundview where all of a sudden now we're gonna have parking on the sides of the street or it's gonna be changed? That didn't make any sense to me. There's talk in here about parking garages and there's talking in here about if you have a property that is one acre, you can put in up to forty units, housing units. And then you would need a parking garage. And I was like, well, I mean, some of these things go too far and then, and then other things are, like, I don't even, there's all this stuff with parking requirements, but I don't know if they're customary or if they're modified for this project. There's a special commission made of three people, a new governmental commission that's gonna approve or unapprove anything that comes along. So I come in, I'm a private property person and they might not like me and they might say no. Or they could say yes, but it has nothing to do with zoning. It has to do with their commission. And I'm just saying hypothetically, within the design guidelines, but it's three new people, three more people. Like instead of, if in an overlay, like for example in Soundview, we don't have an extra group of people that have to then oversee what happens in Soundview. It just is part of the zoning guidelines. And that to me would make more sense if it was part of the zoning guidelines, but not forming another committee. Sometimes it even says in here that the selectmen and these, this three-person committee will make the decisions. I don't think the selectmen wanna make these decisions on Halls Road. I think it should be zoning or planning or, you know, people that we already have instead of adding an extra layer of bureaucracy. Some things in here reference thirteen B zoning, I don't know what that, I don't know what that is. So I just, it was hard for me to even comment on it. Some things seem very restricting and it doesn't make sense to me. Is it, you know, going to be able to be extend, expanded on? But I put that all in that quick email that I sent. But I have a lot of questions, which is what I said, you know, I was going to have a lot of questions. Sorry, I couldn't get it to you before today, right before this meeting. I had so many other things on my schedule, it didn't even cross my mind, like I could only do it today. And this is just for this one, I haven't even gone through this one, but this one has things that, like, you can't, you can't build this, you can't build that, but it's sort of subjective in the drawings and the designs. I feel like it's a very restrictive thing to put on private property. I would like to know what do the current private property owners? I would like to know what do they think of it? Have they looked at this document and have they said, yes, I approve it? Or I would like to go to and see the individual pieces of property, which one is like ten thousand square feet or thirty thousand? So these numbers could make more sense to me, like, does anybody have an acre where they could build forty units on it, which I would like to see what that would look like? And those are things that I don't have, I don't have that information, but that's in this document. And if I put my name on this, I'm saying I'm okay with this and I'm, I'm not.
Right.
On, on the other hand, a lot, a lot of that as with the various drawings from Hall Road is speculative. It's not speculative in a real estate sense, but rather speculative in that it could be like this. Now, as far as forty units housing, I don't think that we ever discussed forty unit housing in this.
We're pumped at that.
At all.
It's in there. It's in there. It's five point one, four point six, three A. The minimum lot area for a multi-dwelling building shall be ten thousand square feet. The H R O D dimensional requirement shall determine the number of dwelling units that can be placed on one lot, provided that no more than forty dwelling units shall be built for one acre of land.
Tokyo style, you know, where they, they have like a, a telephone booth that you live in.
It is a lot, it's a lot.
The number's large, I agree. A small, a small one point two five parking spots is, people create a bunch of parking, which will eat up the, eat up the acreage, which will shrink the dwell.
It also talks about off-site parking and parking garages. And so I'm picturing somebody is gonna be able to come in and put in a humongous parking garage and a. Somebody is gonna be able to come in and put in a humongous parking garage and a forty units, because this document says that they can. And there's also talk about off-site parking, so I just didn't know if they know of some off-site parking that they're planning on using. And then there's also, you know, the on-street parking, that we don't have parking on Hall's Road, so where's this on-street parking gonna come from?
I think it's unlikely that's a state road that on-street parking would ever.
No.
Yeah, they can't.
Like, I also think Mona, that that's zero, I was thinking about that, that's zero setback, I think that's. From the boundary of the state highway, because there's quite a bit of uh shoulder, if you will. I don't know the exact.
It's probably ten to fifteen feet.
Exactly.
Probably off the state.
Correct, so basically they're saying you could build, you know, up to fifteen feet away or whatever it is from the Hall's Road itself. I think that's what was the intent, but I agree.
It would need a walk.
It needs.
I would want to really know these plans, I would know, wanna know the numbers, I would wanna do a walk of all that, and I know it sounds. Like a lot, but you know, this commission signed a letter saying that. That mobile gas station couldn't make improvements and that's embarrassing and then our, our town was sued. And they ended up beautifying it and it's beautiful now and I just don't want that on our town. I don't want any more lawsuits on our town, it could be preventable by us signing something that limits private property. And then people have to sue in order to get what they want. I, I understand everything with the beautifying and i- if it were guidelines and suggestions. I'm all for that, but this is. Rules and regulations that must be followed.
Well, but let me just clarify, there's always rules and regulations, right now there's commercial thirty. Rules and regulations, so there are going to be rules and regulations rather than suggestions.
Right, but people will know those rules and regulations who are in construction, they can, you know, a building and investment, they know what they are. When they go into an overlay area like this, which is very complicated. It's not really pro-business, this is kind of anti-business, in my opinion. Because. A lot of the wording and the way that it's, you know, you can't do this, you can't do this, but you can do this, but you can't do this and. It it. I mean, that's why I sent all those questions and and then there were, uh were the serious problems that I had, like the forty units and the parking garages.
But under five fourteen sevens in table, there's a guiding table that sets forth the limits on the maximum building space. Which would be limitation between building a surface area will limit the number of units you could build on one acre, you'll never get. You'll never get to forty acres, total amount of ground coverage is percentage of lot areas, only seventy-five percent. So between the buildings and the parking requirements, you get to that seventy-five percent. Pretty quickly and they've limited to thirty-five feet or three stories, so those are the overarching governors that will limit the overdevelopment of the housing. From this page.
So one other issue that will limit is on the north side, the non-big Y side. Most of those properties have some wetland.
Hmm.
Abutment, so there's gonna be wetland rules and requirements that are gonna limit. Um pavement and parking and lots of other things, including maybe some of the septic stuff, so. Um I work there, I, I mean, I see wetlands from my window every day, so there are lots of wetlands. That abut most of the properties on the north side, at least, I'm not as familiar with what there might be on the south side. Of the road. So this document would not preclude any of those other requirements. That exist for building around wetlands and other that type of thing.
Right, and so then it's, I, I would like personally to have a walkthrough to figure it, figure it all out, to try to visualize. You know, what this does and I would like to know what the people who own the properties think of it too. I mean, those are, and and I'd like all the other questions answered too, before I could put my name on it, but that's not. I mean, you know that. And so I'm a no vote and whatever all you wanna do. It's fine.
I I was under the impression that the property owners were very well aware of the Hall's Road.
That's not.
But I would also say, I would also say that. Planning is really responsible. For. Planning, what Hall's Road. Should look like.
And and in a strange way, th- this. Those road development or district is a way of putting teeth into the planning. Over the many years. Their planning has had all kinds of plans. But there have been no means of enforcement or guiding or support or encouragement. So it's, they've said, you could do this and then that that has led to ad hoc. Um. Uh whatever fits, kinds of development, rather than what is good for the town. So a- and in fact, the very first movement of the. Uh. A and P to that area was a voice in the wilderness. Then it was a voice in the wilderness next to a gas station.
It is, they were people who bought, had a vision, had money, had whatever and they, and they made it happen. And I'm all for that and I understand that people wanna control how things look. On Hall's Road, I also understand other people want things to move from the back of the parking lot to the front, I know, I've heard this, I've listened to it. I just don't think it should be forced on anybody what they have to do on their properties.
But you see, I, I don't think that it forces any, I think it says you could.
You see that, but I don't, I don't see it.
But right now, they don't have any opportunities other than what they currently have.
And look, nobody's even buying anything and doing anything with it, I mean, they don't even, people don't even care, they're not interested.
In buying property on Hall's Road?
Yeah.
Cause it's kind of limited what you can do there. I mean, I don't know specific.
Someone wanted to buy a piece of property and they came to zoning and everything, they could. Say yeah or no, right, this, but this has been on the table for ten years.
Right, and in the meantime, there was someone who was buying property, who wanted to put some townhouses. On, I think it's the property that's now owned by Mr. Kelsey. Um next on the other side of treasures and he didn't realize there is no way he can put. Townhouses on that land. And so he um, you know, forfeited that.
And now they're so, will allow him to put townhouses. Anywhere?
Well.
On that one.
No, allow, allow him to do mixed use, retail on the first floor and resi above it.
But he could have townhomes behind.
Yeah.
That particular piece of land has lots of wetland.
That's how I read it.
Yeah, it does have a lot of wetland, yeah, all along there, yep.
He wanted to protect the town.
I mean, I'll just say something, I mean, I've been in this town for forty years. The Hideaway Shopping Center has had an abandoned foundation, ugly as the day is long, sitting there for forty years. Thank. This idea of trying to create an incentivization to. Get some movement there and not have ugliness persist for a very long time. You know, I'm very supportive of that, I do not wanna see this abandoned foundation, so my grandchildren. Will grow up to say, oh, yeah, grandfather told me that's been there since he came to town forty, you know, eighty years ago.
Anybody had five million dollars, they.
I, I think, you know, I'm, I, I can't speak, this is not as a commission position or opinion, it's an opinion, Joe's opinion, right? The owner of the hideaway is holding out for money that they're not gonna get, cause it's not worth that, very simple, it went to auction. Wouldn't go for their, their number, they're still looking for their number, eventually with inflation, they'll get their number. But we're gonna be waiting for ten or fifteen years for that to happen, meanwhile, no improvement, abandoned foundation persists. That's why there, there's a need for some other angles to try to get some.
But we're not just signing on other angles, we're signing on a twelve-page document with regulations that. We, we are being asked to say, yes, selectmen, you should sign this, it's gonna form a commission. And people are gonna have to, uh. A committee, a three-person committee.
Which.
In addition to everything else that we have going on in the town, another committee. And a process, I just, if you could, i- if you could give me an overlay. Without more government regulations, whatever, you could give me an overlay that was a lot simpler than this. I'd be for it, but I'm not for this.
As well, the design guideline committee. I would have to say it may even be ad hoc, because they're not going to be meeting if. A property owner isn't coming before zoning, asking to build a particular building. And there's only something like ten property owners on the street, if that. Um so, I mean, maybe that committee comes together once every. Three years.
Comes together with someone, submits something.
Yeah, yeah.
We're planning a zoning, so whenever there's, somebody comes forth with a project, that's when they'll meet.
So you're, you're saying that foundation, right, you're telling me that all these years, no one has come forward to buy that and to put something? So what makes anybody think that they're gonna?
Because the current, the current um zoning, you know, what is allowed by zoning doesn't work.
Yeah, but isn't that when you appeal? So why, if someone is going to come forward, I, just what makes us think that they're gonna allow this if. They won't allow anything else.
What, what's, what it's doing is it's providing, you know, a suggested framework of what you can do.
Hmm.
I think absent any kind of a tangible proposal of what you could do. The property owners like, screw it, I'm not gonna go down a blind alley chasing this, you know, the zoning commission to torture me and waste my money.
But this isn't. Just tangible uh ideas, this is regulations. That are gonna, that, these are regulations that would be in force on Hall's Road.
Where someone choosing to build new.
Right, I, I.
But there is the, there are quite a few restrictions in here, so.
And there are currently restrictions, but right now.
That's, but that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about adopting something new and what are the limitations in this document? I get that there's, you know, I'm not for no change, but. It doesn't have to be so restrictive.
But it's.
Document.
Zoning is always restrictive, if you look at the existing regulations, what's in a C thirty, it's very, they, they list down the types of businesses you can and cannot have. In, in any given business.
In, in C.
That's just the nature of zoning reg, that's why they're there, to say, we don't want strip clothes and we don't want.
Right, part, part of the issue also with the way that are, cause there, there is going to be, I guess, an update of the zoning regs for the town. A consultant is going to be engaged to do that, I'm aware of that.
Yes.
One of the dilemmas that I see in the way the zoning regs are written is very little specificity of what you can do. And, you know, a, a, an overwhelming majority of any option is special permit. So again, for a developer to want to. Start down the process of, I wanna build, you know, retail first floor, apartments above or whatever, fronting on Hall's Road. There's no clarity of what you can or cannot do, they will not spend a dollar on, on, you know, engaging an architect, a landscape designer, you know. Uh you know, a land use consultant or whatever, they're just not gonna do it. So I think there needs to be some clarity as to, okay, you know, you can put apartments. Above retail, fronting on Wall's Road. I mean, maybe this is too much into the weeds, you know, I didn't see this as something we should be. Dealing with the granularity, I don't wanna deal with the granularity.
But that's what this letter is, we're endorsing this granularity, saying to the selectmen, yes, we approve. This and and we, our names are saying to our three selectmen, we think this is great. You need to adopt it forever and into infinity. Signing our names and I don't feel comfortable signing my name. To this document and not saying that I, I, I hear you, I am all for all, uh, everything that we can, but this particular document. Has. Things that I don't agree with in it, that. I would need to see worked out and and I do apologize that I didn't understand from when Edie was here. That this document, cause we didn't have this document until you emailed it to us two weeks ago, we never have this one, so. All of my other questions, the two times that Edie was with us, were based on. All of my other experiences with it, not that those questions weren't important to me, cause they were. But then, and I appreciate all of your answers, cause I do. But this document just has things in it that I feel uncomfortable with. Saying this is gonna be the new rule from here on out on Hall's Road. Because I don't know things like parking places per square foot, I don't know things like what, and and I get it, that, you know, you guys wanna give me the answers. But I wanna make sure that these are the, you know, the right answers, no offense, not that you don't know what you're talking about, but. It doesn't make me feel comfortable when I don't have the answers.
I didn't realize uh that those regulations were part of. The uh Hall's Road Overlay District. I thought the Overlay District was to provide opportunity for imagination. Rather than uh. No parking here, no parking there. They can come forward, they, the developer could come forward with a plan. And then zoning can decide on. But in the meantime, zoning, I believe that this was to remove some of those restrictions, that zoning was hamstrung. With, you know, there will be no residential buildings. That's what the current zoning says, gee, that seems awfully short-sighted now. Uh maybe there was a vision, I don't think there ever was a vision actually for that whole script, you know. Uh. I do know that the uh, the so-called Hideaway Shopping Center did have. Uh a, a completion.
Yes.
Plan, where they just ran out of money and interest.
John, I'm a little confused by your um, what you're unclear on.
I, I'm unclear on the, the level to which those. Regulations apply to. Supporting the idea of an overlay district with zoning that would allow more expansiveness, more opportunity. More ability to fulfill the needs of the town.
Okay, so though the, the overlay regulations. You know, you have the C thirty, those regulations are in place and you can't do this and you can't do this, but you can do this. Then there are these additional options, but they still are restrictions, because, you know, we're not gonna. Invite Best Buy to.
And that's what zoning would be deciding, we don't decide on whether Best Buy wants to build a building here.
Right.
Zoning decides on whether it's appropriate.
But to stay legal, zoning has to start with a set of rules and they need to be able to point to those rules and say, well, look, we can't have a big box.
We have.
Store because see our regulations. Um. Or. They would say, yes, we're, we can let you build apartments, but look in our regulations, in order to build apartments, you need to do first floor.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, because, but that's still conceptual. We, we do allow apartments, but we don't say specifically what they are until you put. Thing before us, as far as the three-person uh. Uh board or approval board, I, I agree with you, Mona, I, I. I think it's probably necessary to have people who would be advisors, but not necessarily. Uh with the strength of the zoning commission behind them. So.
In, in reading the three advisor board, whatever, one had to be a licensed architect.
No, it was suggested.
Oh, suggested.
It wasn't had to be, it was suggested, they could also be a designer. But even that wasn't required.
Hmm.
Well, I think it, that is so that someone knows what particular materials are and can. Um look at plans and. See against the design guidelines, okay, are they following the ga- guidelines or not? And wouldn't uh zoning be um. Appointing that committee? As needed?
Not stated in.
Yeah, I think zoning would be.
Wasn't stated in here and um. That was not, yeah, it wasn't stated, but I mean, still like. If it's being overlaid, it's easy enough that zoning can handle. I'm gonna see that having another. Commission in here, then there's also something that where um. The committee, if they wanted to. They could, if there wasn't a professional architect or other design professional on the committee, they could. Have the person, the applicant. Hire a professional architect or other design professional to assist with design review, but so then you're, they're paying, you know, like, I mean, of course, they're gonna get an architect with their. Hire a professional architect or other design professional to assist with design review, but so then you're they're paying, you know, like, I mean, of course, they're gonna get an architect with their design review, but then. They are getting. Another professional to review.
As a developer would pay for it.
It does, but you said then they're paying for it twice.
Yeah. They don't have any bulk, it's not any extra cost, but. I mean, I I look at it, I look at the architectural review. I hear from people in town, we wanna preserve the charm of the town, so having an architectural review preserves. What we believe is best interest in online and the flip sense of place and that protects. I I look at as that protects it from, you know, they have examples, the pictures in the back that, you know, you don't want bad shopping centers, you don't want them. To use the cheapest materials that would cheapen, so the architectural review protects the integrity of the town. So I loo- I look at that as something they put in place to try to make sure it doesn't degrade into a bunch of different designs. If there's some look and feel to it, it looks consistent with online, what we believe it should look like.
Yeah, Soundview um Village District also has design guidelines.
Yes, yeah, so it was kind of very involved.
And I and I said this before, so I'm repeating myself. So when I did my project in Haddon, I had to go through the architectural review. And they wanted this certain look and feel of the building to Haddon and, you know. Uh, you know, I I didn't like it, but candidly, they gave me a comment that actually made my project better. I was, I listened to them and they made some suggestions that it was something of the building facing Sabre Road and it actually enhanced the project. So the pro- the pro- from my limited sample of one, it worked. Uh, and they had, and they had a ten, they had.
Here's, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but why bother having the three person committee and then you don't have anybody qualified to do the architectural review? So then you gotta go hire somebody to get an architectural review. For me, my comment on that one was. It's another layer of bureaucracy, like it's like you're already making.
Yeah, but it's about like in Haddon, they had an architect that lived in town and the woman, she was the architect and she volunteered. Um, I think there's a, you know, so they had one, but if they didn't have one. In online's case, I would have to have paid for it, but that was, that was the rules when you signed up to say, I'm gonna look at the site and take an option of the site. You you understand the rules of the game and you factor that in your bu- in your development budget. So can I ask you a question? If we amended it in the short form. We, the underside members, you can E D C, support to propose Hall Rose overlay district application and its proposed economic benefits. Would that change your mind? Instead of design guidelines, you just say economic benefits, so we don't get into design.
Or or you you know what I'm thinking, Jeff, you could even say potential economic.
Yeah, potential economic benefits.
So I mean, here's the only other thing that that concerns me is that remember that packet that we had, which I ended up losing? The one that I was talking about at the last meeting where it said, well, one of the three things on the front of this that we're looking at.
Presentation.
Yeah, the halls were a presentation, so we had them come for two meetings. We have this presentation. All I really know is that I don't know these guidelines. We didn't even, you know, we should have been talking about these things, I guess, maybe. So I lost mine, yeah.
It's it's online.
So. Um, oh my gosh, what was I gonna say about that?
Let's see your point, that in order to support. The application.
Oh, there was a list up in there. Okay, so there's a list in here. And now this is, this is hearsay, but I have talked with people in town and there was one of these, one. These are all of the people here in town that support us, and I have heard that people have pulled their support away. So I'm concerned that if we were to say, you know, we support this one, you know, economic aspect of it. We're just gonna make it on that list and it's like, here, these are all the people that support us, but what do they support exactly? Do you know what I mean? Because they're using that as a tool to promote themselves. I mean, and whatever, I mean, I'm sure they don't see any problem with it, but. People might only put one part of it, not the whole picture. And that's where it gets very confusing, because remember I said to Edie, well. I got a copy of the report that the selectman got and it is totally different than anything that we were presenting.
And that was about the bridge.
It was about the bridge and other stuff too. I mean, just completely different presentation. So that's why I feel like there's a lack of transparency, because there's multiple things going on. I wanna see the whole thing, like the big picture. I wanna get all the information. I don't wanna have to go digging to get all the information if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna put my name on it. And I know I'm. Talking a lot about this, but I feel it's important for all of us to think about that, because if we are economic development. And we withhold the opportunity for private business to come in and be able to develop things because things are too restrictive. We're not doing the job we're supposed to be doing. We're actually doing the opposite. And that's what I feel this regulation package potentially could do.
You you believe that it is too restrictive?
It's.
I mean, that that's a real question.
Yeah.
It's not not a leading question. It's a real one.
I feel like it's more restrictive, yes, for private property than what we currently have.
If we did. You would agree it's restrictive?
That 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 sort of thing is too restrictive at this particular time. With respect to Halls Road, I mean, we we are looking at a. At at an unformed thought experiment, but if you don't have the thought experiment, then nothing will happen. It will be continued as it is with ad hoc. Businesses popping up and going away.
In the, in the uh presentation. There were some bullet points and I think kind of explains what this is really about. And I think all of the regs and the detail and the granularity belongs solidly with planning and zoning. And I think that's another big problem. I I'm not gonna talk out of turn, but whatever. The majority of towns in Connecticut have combined planning and zoning. We have these two islands that that's part of the problem. There needs to be a consolidation, so planning and zoning act as one body, because I look at what the intent is here. And I'll just read it real quick if I may. It talks about a qualifying project. The shore's new development will be built first along Halls Road. To create a town center in line with the Halls Road master plan, okay? Qualifying project to front Halls Road with commercial uses on the first floor front, residential use is allowed above or behind. So far, this is pretty clear. After qualifying project, additional development can proceed further back from Halls Road for residential or commercial use. So the the objective is not that it's a movie set, but we're trying to get sort of a main street feel rather than the land of parking fields. Which is what we have now, parking fields and abandoned foundations. Regulation of uses, parking setbacks, height and density, all geared to create a mixed use neighborhood envis- envisaged by the master plan. Design guidelines help developers to know what the town wants. A halls road reflecting the look and feel found on Lime Street. That's pretty clear, I think. So I think that this, the granularity issue that you're having heartburn with, Mona, and I understand where you're coming from, because I mean, there's a lot in there. Now, I don't know, Jeff, would that scare developers away? Or would it encourage them? That's a.
If the septic was scared though, the the septic issue in my view.
Is the biggest.
And water, you know, you this, that's the issue, that's the issue that's gonna cost them money. Figuring out, I mean, the ground for retail, um. You know, it's gonna have to be special experiential retail or some kind of dining commodity retail would be difficult. Uh, but I think the septic is the biggest issue.
And is that talked about in there? I don't think it is. It's it's not in there.
Working there, I can tell you, it definitely is.
Can we do a letter that's in support of the proposal and leave the planning and zoning to that?
The economic, you know.
The regulations shouldn't be our place, right?
Propose guidelines and say the potential economic development for for Halls Road.
Well, then, I mean, there's, there's other things that.
But could we somehow say?
Thing to make it even.
We trust planning and zo- planning and zoning to. Take a um, you know, to look at these proposed changes, to vet them. To put them against the economic strategies of the P O C D.
We would encourage planning, zoning, the Halls Road Committee to continue to get input to get to. The final set of regulations or something.
And and possibly.
Preserves the ability to view that as a s- as a single place, a set place, as a sense of place. We've arrived in old line. Ah, it's nice here. I'm gonna go to that little shop, but then I'm gonna go shopping and then we're gonna walk around. Without getting too flossy about it.
Unless there's an accident on the highway.
You're tourism. The tourists go to the.
I I just wanna get rid of that, just put the economic.
I have to get told. Yeah, you can take my photos.
That's why I would have, I would have wanted my.
That creates.
That's not our job to create that. That's their job.
Oh, economic development, changing his community, the need for housing for the.
But see, I I don't even, I don't even agree with this. You haven't heard all my fights about this. These guys have. I fight about that all the time.
You don't want housing on Halls Road.
No, I'm just saying that I don't think it's it's uh government's responsibility to provide housing or. You know.
Well, government isn't doing that.
There's nothing wrong with encouraging it.
Yeah, but I would, I don't like the way that's worded.
But Ma- and Mona, I'm respecting your position. I really am. Um, and I know we're not changing any minds, so I'm not sharing this with you to try to convince you of anything. But what I'm, what I'm seeing is that. The current regulations are far more restrictive than what is being proposed in the overlay zone. And what the overlay zone allows for is a way for someone to add some.
They can unlock the value of their property. It actually, actually creates more valuable opportunities for value creation for the system. So the treasure chest people and all the people along there on both sides, it allows them to. Lock, repeat, unlock the value with this, because you could do more now. If this thing ultimately passed in reasonably the same form, you could do more things with your property than you can do now.
And it's not, you know, uh, you know, a free ticket to do whatever you want on Halls Road. And that's why we need to have regulations on what the additional opportunities can look like.
The question proposed though was, would we sign a letter?
Yeah.
Saying that the E D C approves this.
Correct, yeah.
And I cannot approve this.
Right.
Because I'm not qualified to approve this in its current form. And so you're asking me to do something that's impossible. I actually believe it's impossible for all of us unless you completely understand what all of these things mean and you stick by it and you say, yes. Martha, you should sign this and this is good. That's what we're being asked by you to do, to sign a letter saying that our selectmen should adopt this. And I don't feel qualified.
Right.
And I don't understand why I I have to keep talking in circles. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't understand at this stage why that set of regulations could be there at all. Your regulations ought to emerge from, from a a generalized picture of what is good, what is the uh. The best use of the land, given those fundamental things that you outlined by reading. And then. Working within that, determine what is, what is possible. So if someone wants to put a, you know, eight, as someone confronted me with a couple of years ago, you're gonna put eight hundred housing units in there. You might remember that rumor. Nobody, no one suggested that. That was their imagination. That's not gonna happen. They can come to you and follow that proposal. They'll say, sorry, no.
Well, you could put another couple of gas stations on Halls Road.
Uh, right, or a Best Buy, you know. And and just turn your back on it the way that many other shoreline towns have done. So. So would you, wh- wh- how do you want us to proceed? Sorry.
I'm the facilitator, not the.
No, no, you're facilitating, fine, no.
Well, we. We could. Create a letter that supports economic growth and the general concepts. Of improving Halls Road. And. We could say we trust planning and zoning to. Look at the proposed application and, you know, move accordingly. Um, but I'm open to any and all suggestions on how to move forward.
I'm okay with that. I think um we support improvements, but the regulations have to be vetted by someone more qualified.
And it's not really our role.
To 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 create or. Right.
You know, review the regulations themselves. Unless a business owner came to us and shared an area where the zoning was was prohibitive. As the folks earlier talked about, the height restriction.
Right.
Being a challenge.
Right.
Because of the way it was interpreted.
Yes.
And and that would inhibit economic development.
Correct.
I mean, that's, we could stick to that, but but if someone has a. Like quipped at the last meeting, the uh ye olde mystic village approach. I don't think we're really after that. Here, but let's not kill it if it's, if it could be done with with architectural imagination.
And a reminder, this has already gone before zoning, zoning um. As we know, didn't pass it. They had feedback for the Halls Road Improvement Committee. And the committee has incorporated zoning's concerns and had updated um this. So. I agree that we're not in a position to assess these regulations.
Yeah, so if you change your letter, say, really underside members of the Economic Development Commission support to propose. Balls Road overlay district strike application, say master plan and its potential economic benefits if approved. And then add that sentence about, we ask the professionals to work out the zoning and work at a collaborative number with the exist, with all the stakeholders, is that?
Right, stop there.
Yeah, didn't we do that for them?
Yes, we did. I remember this conversation.
I was just trying to see if I could find it. Like before.
The first round. I think I read it at the zoning meeting.
Yes, you did. Very vanilla. It was that. It was that letter because I was a pain then. I didn't wanna sign because I didn't really understand, you know, I know that they've done more since and I understand, I I like the concept, but. And so you, I think you have the letter.
It's probably on my hard drive somewhere. If we could remember what year it was, I think it was before the website, the town website was updated and we lost. Excellent.
I thought I would have in my email, but.
Or you can just do a new one. Okay, June ninth, twenty twenty three. Bear with me while I pull up our little minutes. So it was probably. May twenty twenty three, oops. And I don't think May is, I could be wrong, twenty twenty three.
Look for May. December twenty twenty two, I see something that says, you noted. The Halls Road did not go before zoning last month. It could possibly go in December. See if the presentation has changed, but at all before the commission makes a comment. So maybe December twenty two or January twenty three.
Okay.
That was the December minutes.
It's the January twenty twenty two minutes.
Oh, twenty twenty two or twenty?
So you said the E D C encourages the zoning commission to approve the proposed overlay district as outlined on the Halls Road Improvement Committee.
Thanks, Jen. Wow. So this is.
So this is deja vu?
Yeah, pretty much. Well, they have gone several times. Just confirming, January twenty twenty two or January twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty two.
January.
Oh, no, twenty twenty three.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Sorry.
I I'm still impressed. No worries. That's what I would have thought based on my December twenty two.
Okay.
I'm not even seeing the minutes for that one. Okay. Can you read that one more time?
Yeah. The E D C encourages the zoning commission to approve the proposed overlay district. As outlined by the Hall's Road Improvement Committee.
That's a, that's the whole statement.
Yeah, the November seventeen commission was about to state this for the zoning commission and decide over the following statement.
Do we? Excuse me. Do we want to? Continue to create a letter for this month, the submission to. Board of Selectmen?
What is, what is the meeting?
I feel like it's. Usually on a Monday. Nineteenth? Sounds familiar. Finance. Just see if I can. I. Oh. I think it's in there minutes. Hall's Roads Minutes.
So Scott, I don't even think you were here for those discussions. Cause I found it like January twenty three is when you were.
Think so, yeah.
And on the board then.
This is getting slower. I know they're presenting to the Board of Selectmen this month. Okay, they're uh Hall's Roads Minutes. Okay, they. They are presented to the Board of Selectmen on, at the November eighteenth meeting. And if approved to request, they're going to request the town submits to the zoning commission on so- November nineteenth.
Do you think we can grind through the letter here?
Okay.
You got it, Jeff.
We, the undersigned members of the Economic Development Commission, support the proposed Hall's Road Overlay District Master Plan. And its potential economic benefits. It can present it. You can finish that if.
And its potential.
It can have a benefit, period. It's actually gonna best. All right, next paragraph. The Hall's Road Improvement Committee has worked diligently to incorporate public input to process food, town meetings and community presentations. Strike, uh the next sentence would be the old line Economic Development Commissions, can't even read my own writing, commissions. He- the old line Economic Development Commission supports allowing existing. And future property owners the opportunity to meet a changing world's expectations of how people want to live, work and shop. The hall, the Hall's Road Overlay zoning proposal gives Old Line a chance to meet. The changing needs of the community, the need for housing for older residents who seek to downsize and stay in town where they lived for decades. As well as housing for younger workforce who appreciate living in a village setting, uh setting. Struck, struck the next sentence. It starts visitors to our local cultural venues. Look for ways to continue their visit in Old Lime and support local businesses by dining and shopping within a short distance. To our museum and galleries. The Hall's Road Overlay District can provide residents and visitors new retail and dining options. Then the last sentence says, we appreciate the ongoing work of the Hall's Road Improvement Committee, period, and. Probably, I guess, endorse the Board of Selectmen, so. That was some edits.
Okay. And Mona, uh I don't wanna put you on the spot, but is that something? That you would sign or not sign?
Well, yes, because it's not telling them to adopt these.
Okay, all right.
Well, because it does.
Them to be clear, I almost think we could put a line in there like while we cannot.
But we're not in a position.
We're not in a position to endorse the guidelines. We do like the concept of supporting business.
I like that.
Okay, let me capture that before I forget it.
You can see that. I really fifth grader apologize, so.
No, that was good.
While we are not in a position to endorse the guidelines. How about analyze or assess?
Regulations.
There's regulations and guidelines. It's two different items.
Regulations and guidelines. While we are not in a position to address, assess, analyze.
Um wasn't it, but wasn't it endorsed? Cause we're it.
Analyze and endorse.
Analyze and endorse. Eyes and endorse the regulations and guidelines. We.
Support the concept.
Concept.
We still support the concept for master plan or. Of the Hall's Road.
Concept of the Hall's Road Master Plan. Well, yeah, the Hall's Road Overlay District.
Okay, so we're gonna put that in somewhere, so.
I better stay, I better stand next to you, so.
Are we gonna be voting on this?
One second, let me just put this down here.
I think we all wanna be out here quickly.
Okay, sorry. We, the undersigned members of the.
That's fine.
Hall's Road Overlay District Master Plan and its potential economic benefits.
Period, yeah.
Period, yeah.
Okay, then.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Diligently to incorporate. Public input to the process. Any presentations.
It's not that. And there, that's where it was a little bit of confusion between which it's here.
Oh, fine. Mission. Mission supports allowing existing and. Future property owners.
Yes, it's important about the existing.
The opportunity to meet a changing world's expectations of how people want, okay?
I think that that could be good. I mean, you, I know you, the overlay district. Proposition, chance to meet the changing needs of our community. I think that this is, you know, what their vision is, but who's to say if it ends up being. Older people or younger people, you don't know who's gonna move in there, you know? Really dumb.
But you need to open a door into the future rather than.
But that's already been said in the sentence before.
No, it has been said.
Yeah, no, it was already in that, the opportunity to meet a changing world's expectations of how people want to live, work and shop.
And that's my sentence. That that doesn't come from the improvement committee.
And I like, that sentence is good, but that whole next paragraph about the downsizing, I mean, I don't.
I don't know. Retail.
Because to me. That's their selling point on the Hall's Road thing. Where if we're looking this whole paragraph, I just don't think that we need that whole paragraph.
I will, we can talk about in our spot analysis, we talk about these cultural assets and people come and say, you thought that was a strength. In downtown, so to kind of retain them and keep. I've tried to weave that into if they're re- they they're coming here, what's gonna make them come back? I mean, you can go to music, you can go to the. The museum once, but if there was a good restaurant that you went to afterwards, maybe you come back again and do that. So kind of blend merging all these things together. That's why I would, I would recommend leaving some form of that in there.
All right. What if I give this a try, reading it out? I'm gonna read it through once.
Put it on the screen so we can look at it?
No.
No?
I literally cannot, because that's teams and I'm not in teams. We, the undersigned members of the Economic Development Commission, support the proposed Hall's Road Overlay District Master Plan and its potential economic benefits. The Hall's Road Improvement Committee has worked diligently to incorporate public input. To the process through town meetings and community presentations. The Old Line Economic Development Commission. Supports allowing existing and future property owners the opportunity to meet a changing world's expectations of how people want to live, work and shop. The overlay zoning proposition gives Old Line the chance to meet the changing needs of our community. The need for housing for older residents who seek to downsize and stay in town where they lived for decades. As well as housing for a younger workforce who appreciate living in a village setting. Visitors to our local cultural venues look for ways to continue their visit in Old Line and support local businesses. By dining and shopping within a short distance to our museum and galleries. The Hall's Road Overlay District can provide residents and visitors new retail and dining options. While we are not in a position to analyze and endorse the regulations and guidelines, we support the concept of the Hall's Road Master Plan. We appreciate the ongoing work of the Hall's Road Improvement Committee.
Wow, perfect.
Hi. We can vote to just, instead of we, the undersigned, we can just say, the Economic Development Commission support. Supports the proposed Hall's Road. Uh Overlay District Master Plan. So we're gonna vote on this. I'm gonna read it one more time. Okay. Ow, this lands my ankle into that.
And that table's leg.
And they will know, they will know that the overlay district is separate from. The other angles that the Hall's Road Improving.
The bridge and the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Those are part of the master plan. So. Let's revisit this first paragraph again. The Economic Development Commission supports the proposed Hall's Road Overlay District. Master Plan and its potential economic benefits. Do you want it to say the Economic Development Commission supports the proposed Hall's Road Overlay District? And its potential economic benefits?
So there were three things.
Right.
There's the overlay, which is what you had said, that's what we were.
Right, being asked about.
Yeah. Then there's the sidewalks and then the.
Bridge.
So if we just say the overlay.
Okay.
Then it's not the bridge.
Right.
And and I think that's all that's being suggested should go to the zoning. Because that's really the only zoning issue at this stage, right? It's to the overlay district is a zoning piece. The Hall's Road. A district. Okay.
You get that at the end, too.
Yeah, I just changed that as well. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion for the Economic Development Commission to submit a letter of support? That. The Hall's Road Improvement Committee is submitting to the Board of Selectmen this month. That reads as follows, and I'll give you this, Jen. The Economic Development Commission supports the proposed Hall's Road Overlay District and its potential economic benefits. The Hall's Road Improvement Committee has worked diligently to incorporate public input to the process through town meetings and community presentations. The Old Line Economic Development Commission supports allowing existing and future property owners. The opportunity to meet a changing world's expectations of how people want to live, work and shop. The overlay zoning proposition gives Old Line the chance to meet the changing needs of our community. The need for housing for older residents who seek to downsize and stay in town where they've lived for decades. As well as help housing for a younger workforce who appreciate living in a village setting. Visitors to our local cultural venues look for ways to continue their visit in Old Line. And support local businesses by dining and shopping within a short distance to our museums and galleries. The Hall's Road Overlay District can provide residents and visitors new retail and dining options. While we are not in a position to analyze and endorse the regulations and guidelines. We support the concept of the Hall's Road Overlay District. We appreciate the ongoing work of the Hall's Road Improvement Committee. Do I have a motion?
I would make.
We have to, we have to make a motion and then under discussion, we can talk about additions and stuff. So do I have a motion?
I move to accept the letter as read. And then we can.
So you, you're making a motion? Can, yes, as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wendy, discussion, Jeff, what?
I don't have, where it says the sentence where the Hall's Road Overlay District can add residential. Retail and dining options.
Okay, so the Hall's Road Overlay District can provide residents and visitors new retail. Dining and residential options?
And I'll strike that. Keep it as as, I'll strike my change.
You're overthinking.
Good call, Wendy. Strike my comment.
What's that, Mona? What does he say now?
Visitors to our local cultural venues. Visitors to our local cultural venues look for ways to continue their visit in Old Lime and support local businesses by dining and shopping within a short distance. To our museums and galleries. The Hall's Road Overlay District can provide residents and visitors new retail and dining options. All in favor? Well, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the letter as read? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Bravo.
Bravo.
All right.
For sure. Drafting.
Yeah.
It's always easy to average, but you do the hard work.
Well, the the first, I have more while in. The second, I cut out.
I I said, consider it for a future um update.
Tell a story of why.
Yeah, we are not done with our meeting.
You mind if I choose myself?
Yes, John. We thank you, John, for your hard work this week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, John.
New and other business? Any new and other business for tonight? Okay. If we have no other new and other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm gonna give it to Mona. Is there a second?
Give it to Mona, second, I'll say.
All right. Thank you, everyone.